I'm Jerry Miller. Thank you kindly for joining us on the I Love Seville Show. It's great to connect with you in our studio in downtown Charlottesville on our network, the I Love Seville Network, that's become the watercooler of content and conversation for Charlottesville, Almaro County, and central Virginia. A lot of topics we're going to cover today. We're going to talk Glenn Youngkin, AstraZeneca, we're going to talk, what, four and a half billion dollars invested into Almaro County, AstraZeneca publicly traded. It's going to have two headquarters or two facilities built in Almaro County. The expectation for a grand opening for these two facilities is 2029, so not that far off. They are going to be the largest facilities in the AstraZeneca network, the largest ones in the world, and they're here in Almaro County. They're going to be built in Rivanna Station, Rivanna Futures. Remember, weeks ago, who told you that these were going to be built there? Ladies and gentlemen, that was us. We're going to talk about that on today's show. A lot we're going to cover on the program, including the job creation that comes from this AstraZeneca multi-billion dollar investment. Of course, we're going to talk real estate. It's how we make our living. 303 Alderman Road in the Lewis Mountain neighborhood is back for sale. Remember, this was the rancher purchased by Evergreen a couple of years ago. The rancher was then going to be torn down, and the rancher was going to turn into, ladies and gentlemen, was it six luxury brownstones at a million plus dollars apiece. This rancher in the Lewis Mountain neighborhood was purchased a year and change ago, let me be specific, June 2024, for $835,000. It is currently listed for sale for $949,000, $949,000. It is an uptick in asking price that is significant at a time when Charlottesville real estate values are flat, if not falling, and Evergreen tore out all the inside of the house.
Yeah.
So they bought this home. We're going to show you the pictures, and I'm not trying to throw shade on Evergreen. It was just a blunder of significant proportions here. The home was purchased in June of 2024 for $835,000, and the expectation for this developer, this builder, was to tear down this rancher and the prominent, premier, prestigious, pomp Lewis Mountain neighborhood, and build six luxury brownstones with an asking price of more than a million dollars apiece for each brownstone. Because of community revolt and outrage, the project never materialized, also because of some covenants and restrictions from a long time ago. Evergreen finally said, we are done with this. We're just going to list the home, and now they're asking $949,000 for the piece of property, and they literally have torn out all the inside of the house. How they're, it's not even going to come close to selling for this, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to talk, however, the lead of the show, the Almaro County School Board meeting from last night, Allison Spillman, Dr. Matthew Haas, Turning Point USA Western Almaro Chapter, the Almaro County School Board, and what has turned into a soap opera of Victor Newman, Cricket, Young and the Restless proportions. So much to cover on the program. I'd like to highlight first, Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes. If you need hardscaping done at your house, there's one firm to call, Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes. Fantastic office Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes has on the Charlottesville downtown mall. Custom hardscapes and outdoor living spaces. Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes can make any hardscape a reality at your house, no matter how complex your hardscape installation may be. Their team can deliver a beautiful, custom, outdoor living space for you to enjoy. So much to cover on the show. Judah Whitkower, studio camera. Judah Whitkower, two shot. I'm looking forward to having the next hour of discussion with you, my friend, on a Friday. Judah's favorite day of the week, second favorite day of the week. This is not a payday Friday for Judah. This is a, don't have to see Jerry Miller for two days after this, Friday for Jerry, for Judah Whitkower.
You win some, you lose some.
This is your second favorite kind of Friday. Your first favorite kind of Friday is payday Friday, right?
No doubt.
No doubt. Yeah, I don't blame you. Where do you want to begin?
Uh.
With the popcorn and the school board meeting?
Yeah, we might as well.
If you have not seen the highlights and the lowlights from the Almaro County School Board meeting, you are missing popcorn-worthy content. I watched it in real time yesterday on the livestream. Unfortunately, Almaro County Public Schools appears to have taken down the video. They had a link on the Almaro County Public Schools Facebook page
Yeah.
where you were able to click this link and watch the video of the school board meeting from last night. That has since been taken down. We have spent most of the morning scouring the interwebs for video content of last night's school board meeting. Almaro County appears to have taken down the video, and Judah, you can confirm?
The video is not playing. I don't know what the issue is, whether it's been taken down, or it, you can still press play, but nothing happens. So take that as you will.
Take it, I don't think it's a coincidence.
May not be.
And the reason I don't think it's a coincidence is because other school board videos, other videos of school board meetings are present on the YouTube channel the public schools use. This particular meeting, the video is not present, at least as of 12:30 today.
That may just, in terms of YouTube, it may just be that they haven't had time to upload it, but who knows?
Judah's much more willing to offer patience and grace. I'm very much of the mindset, where there's smoke, there's fire, where there's something to hide, actions are being done to hide it.
I can certainly see that being the case with the, what's on their, what's on their website, but YouTube, I mean, you know, that's something that actually has to be uploaded. So who knows?
Ladies and gentlemen, highlights and lowlights from the meeting. And after we talk Allison Spillman's tearful apology from last night, after we talk the parade of people who commented at last night's meeting, the dozens more who were unable to comment, we are going to ask you, the viewer and listener, this question. Has cancel culture birthed or materialized into consequence culture? Allison Spillman's actions when comparing Western Almaro students to the Ku Klux Klan, one of the most hated groups in world history, was cancel culture on Spillman's part. And her cancel culture actions then birthed consequence culture.
Well, I don't know about her.
And the consequence, consequence culture that Spillman has faced is a litany of hate, nasty messages directed at herself, her family, husband, children, employer, husband's employer. And I'm going to say this again, I'm going to say this again, ladies and gentlemen. The hate directed at Spillman's husband and kids, and husband's employer and her employer, is completely out of line.
And despicable.
It's absolutely despicable. I do not stand by any of it at all. I'll also caveat this. The hate directed at Allison Spillman to the tune of violence and threats is despicable, and I don't stand for it in any capacity.
Yeah.
However, the commentary, even mean-spirited commentary directed at Allison Spillman that's backed with some reasoning and facts, is applicable and legitimate, because she created this mess. And her cancel culture mentality, her cancel culture actions have now, ladies and gentlemen, yielded consequence culture for Allison Spillman and her loved ones. We'll get to that topic on the show. I did get a text message here from Kate Schartz, so, and I appreciate, appreciate the queen of Ivy sending me this text message. There is video footage that she has found of the school board meeting. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to chop this down, and Spillman's comments, her tearful apology for this show, Judah. How long would that take for you, for you to do on the, during the show? First, you would have to find it. All right, we're not going to be able to get to it.
It might not take too long. The problem is, it would interfere with the
Yeah, we're not going to do it.
The stream.
We won't do it. We'll just, we'll just offer, Carol Thorpe was there last night. Meg Hart, I did see Rob's videos posted as well. Schilling, looks like he took footage himself. I initially was going to air Rob's footage on this show and offer him credit for those video clips, but I thought twice, because I don't, I did not have confirmation from Rob of airing his content, and I'm a firm believer of copyrights and content rights.
Yeah.
And I don't want to infringe upon Rob's, but Rob looks like he was there taking footage. All right, let's talk Spillman first. A six, six to seven minute, tearful and emotional apology from the at-large school board member Allison Spillman. Did you see it? Did you listen to it? Did you hear it? Did you watch it?
I saw it. I listened to it. I, you know, I 100% appreciate that we are getting a, an apology from her.
Finally.
Yeah, finally.
This is the third time, third time's the charm with Ally Spillman, an apology.
And I'm, I'm disturbed by the fact that it, I'm disturbed by what brought, what brought it out of her. The fact that
Go ahead. I don't mean to interrupt.
The fact that she's gotten, the fact that she's gotten hate.
Bingo.
Male hate.
Bingo.
Whatever.
Bingo.
The fact that, the fact that she's gotten threatening messages, I mean, that is, that is unacceptable from anyone. I don't care which side you're on, I don't care what the supposed fault is that you're, that you're, that this is, that it's about. That kind of behavior is disgusting, and I am disgusted by the fact that, that Americans are, I mean, obviously, it's not a surprise. These people are out there, but it's disgusting that, that we live among them. I don't care what side you're on, if you're sending people hate messages and threatening messages because you don't like something about them, that's, it's inhumane.
Here are my thoughts, viewers and listeners. Allison Spillman, it took a third time to manage this the right way, the adult way, the mature way, the way we try to as parents, to lead with an apology. Was that apology rooted in authenticity? We hope so. Was that apology rooted in fear? Probably. Was that apology rooted in a swarm of hate, and this is how you extinguish or resolve the hate? Most likely. Regardless, she finally said the words that everyone knew had to be said. I am sorry.
Yeah.
She finally said.
She owed that to the kids in Western Almaro High School.
And during this apology, and I hope Meg Bryce hears this, I hope Almaro County parents hear this, during this apology, she talked about a strategic, coordinated campaign used against Allison Spillman. A strategic, coordinated campaign to try to take her down, silence her, and to punish her, and how it was awful and nasty. She highlights that in her apology. I am nostalgic, or quick to remember, the strategic, nasty, and coordinated campaign that Allison Spillman's team utilized to try to take down Dr. Meg Bryce.
No doubt.
During this at-large school board race that captivated America and certainly Almaro County. When Allison Spillman and Meg Bryce were fighting, campaigning against each other for this at-large seat a couple of years or so ago, Spillman used every dirty nasty trick of the book, including having a campaign manager launch a burner website, a fake website, to take down Meg Bryce, impugn her character, her integrity, and her reputation. So perhaps Allison Spillman has got a dose of what she dosed out while campaigning against Meg Bryce, because that same strategic, coordinated, nasty effort that she used to beat Meg Bryce was now being used against her with her Ku Klux Klan comments. So here's a little bit of dose of reality for Spillman. Can't throw stones in glass houses, Ally Spillman.
And this is, and this is what I mean by cancel culture birthing consequence culture. Cancel culture is, is when somebody takes, take Meg Bryce, you take things from her past. The, I mean, in this case, it was the fact of her birth, who her father was, and using that against someone. Oftentimes, in other cases, it was, it was digging and digging and digging until you find something damning against someone, and then publicizing that and using it to, you know, to whatever it is, get them out of a
Jay Jones.
Political race.
Good example.
Yeah, that was, and
And Jay Jones's texts were despicable.
Yeah.
They're disgusting, they're despicable, they're devilish, they're evil, they should be highlighted. These are texts from 2022. Talk about a moron here, a guy who's trying to be the Attorney General of Virginia texting that he wants an, an, an opposing Republican politician murdered, and his kids, two and five years old, dying in the arms of their mother.
But to be fair, he said those things three years ago.
There's nothing, I can't, I
I'm not, I'm not
To be fair, and what he said should never be in the same sentence together, Judah. To be fair, and what he texted should never be, you can't justify that.
I'm not justifying what he said.
We're getting off
Pointing out facts, and the fact of the matter is, cancel culture often dealt in exactly those terms. Somebody doing something in the past and being held to account three, five, 10 years later.
See, I don't even think the cancel culture needs to be time stamped in the past.
But that is generally what it was about.
100%, I'll give you that.
And consequence culture is about holding people to account for things they're doing today.
Cancel culture
At least the way I, the way I see it.
See, the way I, I see, I see the point you're making. You make a very good point. The way I see it is Allison Spillman tried to use cancel culture, or cancel culture tactics with this KKK rhetoric, and this attack of the Turning Point USA Western Almaro Chapter, and labeling these students essentially the Ku Klux Klan, or linking the students to the Ku Klux Klan on social media, right? She's using cancel culture tactics, and as a result of those cancel culture tactics, we're now in a 2025 where those can, cancel culture tactics now have rebuttals, and those rebuttals are consequence culture. There was a time, a year ago, year and a half ago, very recent past, where cancel culture, if people started using cancel culture, it was effective, and no one would fight back. Now you're starting to see, you know, whether you're on the left or you're on the right, people fighting back against cancel culture. And that's the consequence culture. And Allison Spillman and this consequence culture is dealing with it. She's dealing with people from Almaro County, from city of Charlottesville, from central Virginia, from outside the region, from all over the country, from anywhere, because it's keyboard warriors. Donna Price called them in a social media post today. The keyboard warriors are essentially the road rage drivers.
Yeah.
These keyboard warriors. Their consequence culture, Allison Spillman now, going after her. And, and what we saw last night at this Almaro County School Board meeting, and I'm going to open this up to your, your comments, viewers and, 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 and listeners, viewers and listeners, offer your comments in the feed, and I will relay them live on air. We've got a lot of people watching the program. Print, radio, and television is all over this show. Okay? If you, if you are even the least considering taking your children out of Almaro County Public Schools, even the least consider, even barely considering it, what you saw last night at this school board meeting, where seven people and a superintendent direct a 200, nearly $300 million yearly school board, but school, public school budget, I would think you're more motivated now than ever to take your kids out of these schools. I think you're more motivated now than ever. And for the TV stations that are watching this program, CBS 19 and NBC 29, your coverage of what transpired was far from balanced. I had multiple people highlight this to me this morning, and then I went and watched. The coverage offered by NBC 29 and CBS 19 was not coverage that was balanced, that covered the, the opposition to Allison Spillman.
Yeah.
The support of Allison Spillman in the same way, overwhelmingly in support of Spillman. And, and, and I have to caveat this, because people like to take my commentary out of context here. I do not stand with threats or violence of any kind against Spillman, Allison, certainly not her husband and kids.
No.
I don't stand for it. It's despicable. I don't stand for nastiness directed at her husband, nor her kids. It's despicable. The stuff that's directed at Allison herself is fair game, because she chose to run, and then she got into a, jumped into a pool that she made filthy with her commentary. And I, I want you to understand this. She talked in emotional, tearful capacity that this coordinated effort used against her to tear her down, impugn her character, and rip down her name and her family, was the same tactics that Spillman and Chris Seaman, isn't that is the campaign manager's name, Chris Seaman?
I think you're right, yeah.
Used against Meg Bryce.
Yeah.
So Allison Spillman, you made this bed. You made this bed when campaigning against Meg Bryce. She did not do that to you. Bryce did not impugn your character. She did not create fake burner websites to attack who you were. She did not try to belittle you because of who your father was, demean you, marginalize you because of who your father was. She did not say your, 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 your father's ideology and your father's politics are who you are because you're his daughter. That is incredibly insulting. I know Meg Bryce, incredibly intelligent person. What she tried to do by labeling her father's daughter and following her father's path ideology-wise is an insult to women.
Yeah.
Insult to women. That's akin to put the apron, stay in the kitchen, and do some cooking, what they were doing there. So that same coordinated effort that she utilized against Bryce is what she's facing right now. Stones in glass houses, Ally Spillman. And I hope you hear that. And interestingly, at the end of that six-minute tearful apology, she also said, you know, this coordinated effort has worked. It's made me hesitant to offer verbal commentary and my protection and support for marginalized students in our school system. She highlights that. I'm paraphrasing for her, but that's what she said in her six-minute tearful apology, seven-minute tearful apology. So I, you jump in, and then I'm going to open it up to comments for viewers and listeners. Viewers and listeners that are watching the show, put your comments in the feed. I'll relay them live on air in about two minutes. If you had any thought at all about removing your kids from Almaro County Public Schools, after the shitshow we saw last night, and the last week of shitshow, there should be more motivation and, and, and drive to take your kids out than I think I've ever seen in my 25 years of living in this community. You've had test scores tanking, you've had performance tanking, you've had school become a political landmine. We still haven't commented about the boys and girls lockers, locker rooms and bathrooms to lurk, to lurk and linger.
Yeah.
Still haven't even talked about that. Matthew Haas has built a school system of, of, of inclusivity to the detriment of academic output and performance. That's what's, it's become so politicized, this school system in particular, that it's on Trump's mind, Donald Trump's mind. And this is not about pro-Trump, anti-Trump. Trump has talked about Almaro County Public Schools. We have such a radical school system that Almaro County Public Schools is on the shortlist of the President of the United States of America. Think about that. Prioritizing inclusivity to the detriment and the damning of academic output and performance.
Yeah.
Viewers and listeners, comments in the feed. Judah Whitkower, if you have any comments, offer them now, and then I'll get to the more comments than we can keep up with here.
Hmm. I'm, I'm honestly sorry that she feels that she'll be less likely to, to advocate. I, I believe we need parents and, and school board members that are willing to advocate for the kids in their schools, but it can't be at the detriment to other groups of students, in this case, the, the Turning Point USA students that she, that she feels so strongly about. And there's an interesting comment that came out of the, out of the school board meeting, where someone said, believing in traditional gender roles and holding religious convictions about sex and identity is not hate speech. And I think that's ultimately the problem with, with Allison Spillman's view of them, is that just because she has a trans child, anybody that holds different beliefs about, about sex, gender, identity, is somehow advocating hate speech, and that's not hate speech. Now, if those same kids are going out and bullying, or, or attacking, or, or interacting in a, in a way that, that should be called out with trans students, then yes, call that out. But until that time, they're entitled to, you know, they're entitled to their school activities, they're entitled to their beliefs, they're entitled to their convictions.
Comments coming in. Megan Hart, watching the program. If you have a photo for Megan Hart, put it on screen, please. Do I believe that Allison Spillman should have gotten those messages? Absolutely not. She says, I'm torn because she waited this long to make this apology, even a few days after her KKK post wasn't even an apology. This is the third time. She did the initial post, then she issued the statement on her public-facing Facebook page, after the KKK post on her private Facebook page, and then she finally made an apology at the school board meeting last night. I think Ally Spillman's also learned a lesson, that even on your private Facebook page, anything that you say, or publish, or text, or email, is public record and, or, or fair game for the public as an elected official.
Yeah, Facebook is not public. I mean, it's not private.
Facebook, Allison Spillman, is today's newspaper.
Bulletin board.
Is today's, thank you, it's better. Facebook is today's bulletin board, Allison Spillman. Philip Reese, he was in attendance last night. I saw him on the livestream, standing up. He says, has Allison Spillman deleted her original Facebook post yet? According to the daily progress, she has not. Why hasn't she deleted that post?
Because she stands by it, as does the school board, sadly. But they are entitled to their opinions, as they are entitled to the consequences of their opinions.
Carol Thorpe was in, in attendance last night, the queen of Jack Jewett. She says, you are right, Jerry. Allison Spillman got a dose of karma. Kate Schartz is not buying the tearful apology. The queen of Ivy says, I think only 30 seconds was an apology. She then continued to double down.
Yeah.
Jonathan Cron, Vicky Sneed, welcome to the program. Print, radio, and television all over the show. Megan says, she said last night she's all for the children, Allison Spillman. If you are all for the children, why did Allison Spillman make the original Facebook post? She's trying to get a Turning Point Club shut down, but that's not being all for the children.
Yeah, that's true.
More comments coming in. Put your comments in the feed. I'll relay them live on air. Stacy Baker Patty, I respect her opinion tremendously. She says, there are so many opportunities that could be taken from that school board meeting that would lend itself to excellent advertisement to remove your kids from Almaro County Public Schools. that would lend itself to excellent advertisement to remove your kids from Alamo County Public Schools. Everyone should re-watch and listen to the hypocrisy. She says she agrees with us on multiple accounts. Aaron Telefarro says violence is never justified. I agree. Stacy Baker Patty says Allison and Chris Seaman wrote the book on what is happening to Allison right now. She says, Stacy Baker Patty, how about the defacing of campaign signs with slurs? That camp the that campaign owns those actions. It was and is still disgusting. Jennifer Nunley Hux, 100% Jerry about the motivation to take kids out of Alamo County Public Schools. Sharon Fix, her comments. I would have taken my kids out years ago, but not everyone can afford to homeschool or go private, even with generous scholarships. We are stuck in the mediocrity of Alamo County Public Schools and their agenda. I empathize with that. Even folks that are paying full freight with public schools feel the sting, for private schools, I should say, feel the sting of paying full freight. And and you know sadly, sadly, this is sadly. I don't see this uh improving or fixing itself anytime soon.
No.
And if it were to fix itself or improve anytime soon, you'd have somebody like Jim Dylan Beck win. You would have had somebody like Meg Bryce win.
Yeah.
And 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 we ask the question, how have we made this bed? Well, we've made this bed by electing the people who are on the board.
Yeah.
Who follow in lockstep with what the superintendent Matthew Haas vision is for this school system.
Which is why I called the chairs his the other day. But yeah, there you have a one-sided board and you've got no real accountability because it's one-sided, because you know, they have their own echo chamber. And as you said, things are not going to change uh because it took, you know, it took the horrific actions of some people, you know, threatening her family and sending, you know, disgusting messages to elicit a uh as some of our viewers have have pointed out, a half-hearted apology. Uh the the supervisor and uh or the superintendent and the board have not uh said anything to uh to indicate that they uh that they feel any different than uh than Allison does. Um and this is going to go on and uh yeah, uh it would be wonderful if uh if there was a a balanced board, if there was a if we as as a a city and a county were capable of uh of discussion, of compassionate, you know, understanding of each other, of our uh, you know, of our stances. Uh that if we were able to uh meet face to face and and have a a conversation. But uh we've become so divided that uh it seems there's, you know, it seems on the face of it that there's no no meeting place. And obviously, you know, most of us, I think, don't just have friends who say the exact same things that we do. Uh but uh in in these politicized situations, um it often seems like nobody's talking.
Make sure, please make sure you're rotating uh lower thirds on screen, headlines on screen. Ginny Hu uh says, the apology did not feel sincere from Allison Spillman at all and she made herself the victim. No one deserves to be threatened, but focusing on herself cheapened Allison Spillman's sorry.
Yeah.
Ginny Hu, and there could be three we could rotate on screen, the the headlines. Ginny Hu also says via Twitter, also the Jay Jones story, the uh governor debate. All those storylines have taken the heat off of Allison Spillman. If it's not for the Jay Jones storyline, the governor debate, this Allison Spillman, Ginny Hu says, would be much more in the news cycle. And she says it needs much more attention. Now, here's what we follow next before we get to the AstraZeneca story and before we get to 303 Alderman Road. The Lewis Mountain House, the rancher that was uh to be uh raised and knocked down and 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 replaced with six luxury brownstones. That's now back on the market for sale. We're going to talk about that. But before I I get to those topics, I want to offer a little bit more analysis of what I think the Allison Spillman storyline is going to uh, you know, evolve into, okay? I think if if um by Monday or Tuesday of next week, this Allison Spillman storyline unfortunately is going to be out of the news cycle. I would bet you the only platform of merit that will even talk about it on Monday or Tuesday is the one you're watching and listening to here, and that's why you watch and listen to this show daily. Okay? Once this story gets out of the news cycle, you actually run the risk of Spillman becoming emboldened, empowered and strengthened. Her base is clearly galvanizing around her, fortifying her or rallying with her um uh calls for distress and emotion. And if that base rallies and strengthens around her, you actually may see Spillman after two or three days more of 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 healing or the hate uh dampening down, you might actually see Spillman come out of this early next week, emboldened and empowered. And that is, from my standpoint, a terrifying proposition. I cannot highlight enough the similarities with Spillman and Nakia Walker. You have two elected officials that are more activists than actual you know, jurisdictional leaders.
Yeah.
These are activists.
They're for some people, not just not all the people. Sadly, those are the people in that should be in their purview.
Nakia Walker should have been for Charlottesville.
Yeah.
Instead Nakia Walker, all she was for were marginalized people and folks of color. And I champion Nakia Walker for standing up for marginalized folks and folks of color. But I call her out for not also offering that same champion set mentality, that same cheerleader mentality to the city she represents or represented. Allison Spillman, it's the same thing. She is championing the trans student community and I'm all for Allison Spillman championing and cheerleading and rah ah ha-ing the trans student community. Go for it. But it cannot be at the at the expense of Alamo County Public Schools, the student body as a whole.
Yeah.
It's not zero sum. The similarities with Spillman and Walker are are eerie. Eerie, using social media in divisive capacity, posting unhinged commentary on social media. Ku Klux Klan for Spillman when talking about teenagers, rape poetry when talking about Charlottesville for Walker.
Yeah.
Emotions in school board meetings and city council meetings. And what you saw with the Nakia Walker, uh what's it called, a storyline? Like, you know, you got uh the the, we're not even close to the denouement. We're not even close to falling action. We're not even at the climax yet. And until we got to the climax of the storyline of Nakia Walker and then the denouement, the falling action, we saw Nakia Walker that actually got emboldened and empowered. To the point where she's like, I'm gonna run for reelection and do this, let's run it back. Like playing a basketball game at the park, let's run it back. Who's got next? And then she finally realized that she lost that momentum and then dropped out of a race. I think Spillman's on a similar archetype, similar arc. Where she's gonna come out of this Monday or Tuesday empowered and emboldened, and that should terrify you as parents of ACPS students. Terrify you. 115 marker, two other storylines to cover. Anything else you want to offer on this, Judah Wickhower, viewers and listeners, your thoughts, put them in the feed.
No, I'm I hope it doesn't uh embolden her in terms of in terms of singling out uh student groups at at the school. I hope that is not the lesson that she takes from this.
Comments coming in. Cameron Wells Marsh, fantastic person, fantastic family. This just reminds me how glad I am that my kids are not enrolled in Alamo County Public Schools anymore. Philip Reese, if the other school member, school board members aren't willing to condemn what Allison posted, they are condoning what she said, 100% what we've been saying on the show. 100% agree. Margit King Collins, this bed was made when Matt Haas was reappointed. Carol Thorpe, when I chaired the Jefferson area tea party 15 years ago, I knew my Facebook page post could be used as fair game. 15 years ago. That goes for all public figures and yes, while I also condemn the hate Ms. Spillman has received, I agree she made her statement all about her and doubled down on her opinions.
Yeah.
Georgia Gilmer, so much for school boards being nonpartisan, neutral, especially around here. Jason Noble, she's not sorry about what she said, she's embarrassed she got called out.
That may be very true.
Carol Thorpe, this election of activists began with Kristin Zekos, then came Wes Bellamy and then Nakia Walker, then Allison Spillman, and just wait until Zayanna Bryant gets elected to the Charlottesville City School Board.
We're gonna have
Dude, I can't help but have great content on this show.
Some fun news days.
Pop the popcorn. We are th- three and a half weeks away from Zayanna Bryant, the most notorious of activists in our community's history and being elected to a city school board and running uh how much is the Charlottesville City School Budget?
Um I don't know.
I mean, Jesus, we're about to give the keys to a 2025 Charlottesville city schools, city public schools budget. I should know that. I should, I'm disappointed in myself that I don't know that. Disappointed. Um okay, oh, just $120 million. We're about to give the keys to a $120 million budget to a uh mid twenties, mid twenty-year-old notorious activist.
Yeah.
That has a history of tarring and feathering fellow college students based on gossip and rumor mill.
Yeah.
Charlottesville is about to elect a mid twenty-year-old notorious activist.
Who destroyed someone's life because of hearsay.
And hearsay. And say, here is $120 million budget for you to figure out. And the future of thousands of students.
I'm more worried worried about the students than I am about the budget.
They go hand in hand.
They do, but uh the budget is money, the students are
Right now, you want to know what the best advertising campaign for any of the private schools in the area is? Allison Spillman and Zayanna Bryant. The the private schools in the area just let Allison Spillman and Zayanna Bryant do their thing. Am I wrong?
No, no, I'm, I mean, if they wanted to actually design ads, they could just
I wouldn't even, you don't even have to spend the money. I mean, you don't have, private schools in the area, you don't even have to spend the money. You don't even have to spend the money.
Let them hoist themselves by their own petards.
Let them be them. Let them be them and watch what happens.
Does this become a the cultural divide in Charlottesville and Alamo County?
Oh, that's a great storyline.
That um the majority vote for who they want in uh in office and in school boards, in uh in city councils and then um in the case of the schools, the the other side who doesn't have a say or at least uh they're not heard because uh they don't have enough votes to, you know, to put an opposing voice on a school board ends up uh taking their toys and going and playing somewhere else.
That's
In this case, uh private schools.
And and and
And then and then the and then the other side says, oh, well, you know, you you're you're not participating in, well, of course, we're not participating. Look what you're saying about our kids.
Yeah. Well, then take it a step further, take it a step further. And I'm seeing it firsthand with our oldest kid with the with the curriculum and the expectations in second grade, it's hard. And it's not second grade when compared to what the public schools are doing in second grade. It's like third grade, in some cases, early fourth grade, what he's doing in second grade in a private school.
Yeah, you keep going.
Like, that compounding from kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade and 12th grade and the most impressionable periods and the most impressionable minds or or time of mind, the maturation of the mind, the molding of the mind, the growing of the brain. That is a a educational gap that's gonna yield and lead to so much for a generation of socioeconomic output or lack thereof.
And that gap will grow exponentially. It's not just a, it's not just a, you know, like
That's why I used to wear compound.
Yeah.
It's a compound.
Yeah. And school's not supposed to be easy.
Right? Dude, our kid, our kid, our kid is second grade, had a uh a math test yesterday. Math test, literally got in the car uh on uh Wednesday. Math test might have been today. No, 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 math test was yesterday. Got in the car on Wednesday. Said, I got a hard, exact words, his exact words were, I have a really hard math test tomorrow. And before he went to bed, said, I've been really thinking about this math test, it's gonna be really hard. Like thinking about it the whole day before Thursday's math test and he's seven.
Yeah.
And you know, part of me was like, God, this is hard, like this is hard for him. This is like really hard for him. But then part of me was also like, let's go.
But when he gets it, the the feeling of, the feeling of pride, like I had the hardest time in school, this was, I think, around maybe fifth grade, we were starting to do fractions or whatever it was that I was learning fractions. I had the hardest time wrapping my head around them. Uh and at some, at one point, uh at one point, it just clicked. And the feeling of of just
Pride.
Pride, relief, uh and and that and that held me over for years, like just not hating math anymore, not that I liked it, but uh but I could at least, you know, I could at least go to the class without, you know, without this fear.
Totally get it, totally get it. So with our seven-year-old, I feel for him. And then I also love it.
Yeah.
Cause uh was it, what's the phrase, failing forward? Failing forward, like some failure is good. Failing forward, the last thing you want to do is fail backward. Failing backward is struggling with something and retreating. You can actually struggle with something and move forward. Failing forward. That's a positive. There's so many times I've been in business for the last, since May of tw- May of 2008, I've woke up every morning and been like, how am I gonna go earn money for this firm to cover payroll, his mortgage, team's mortgage, staff, family bills, groceries, our mortgage, how are we gonna do it? Since May of 2008, how many is that? It's had 18 years and that's 18 years in May of next year. For almost 18 years, for 17 and a half years. There's been so many times in those 17 and a half years that I've effed something up. Like being wrong at it, effed it up. But it's those royal F-ups that have actually yielded tangible productivity and the tangible productivity And the tangible productivity yielded profitability.
Sometimes failure means you're on the wrong path and and
Those F-ups
Understanding.
Created the best value for the firm and clients and the most profit.
Yeah.
Failing forward. All right, it's one twenty-six. We've fifty-six minutes on this. We have other important items we've got to get to as you're rotating lower thirds on screen. I want to highlight Sir Speedy of Central Virginia, Conan Owen, Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. They doing the signage on 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 our studio, the banner that's directly behind me With our rental properties, we have twenty-four of them. They're helping with the signage on those. Some additional real estate positions that we're pursuing right now downtown, they're helping with the signage on those. Conan Owen is is a trusted, trusted partner for the Miller Organization and should be someone you can count on For your firm and your business. He's a Darton graduate, Conan Owen, Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. Any marketing graphics, direct mail, signage, stickers, decals, windows, anything. Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. AstraZeneca News, this is as significant a story As 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 there's been in 2025, and in any other week, The governor of Virginia being in Alamo County, and any other week, a publicly traded company Announcing a 4.5 billion with a B investment into Alamo County, and in any other week, Six hundred new six-figure jobs coming to Alamo County, and in any other week, Three thousand new construction jobs to build AstraZeneca's two new facilities in Rybana Station, Rybana Futures, north of town, Would be the lead of the program. Allison Spillman says, "I want the lead of the I Love Seville Show."
It's not fair.
AstraZeneca storyline is this, 4.5 billion from a publicly traded company, Invested in Alamo County, the construction starts right now. They are building two facilities at Rybana Station, Rybana Futures, the land that Alamo County bought, over four hundred acres from Wendell Wood. I told you two weeks ago that AstraZeneca was gonna position its its facilities in this location. And two weeks ago, there was no knowledge of the location, but I said it was gonna be here. We called it again. Six hundred new jobs, these are deep six-figure jobs, scientists and executive type jobs. This is gonna be AstraZeneca's largest facilities in the whole effing world. Literally, they announced that yesterday. The largest ones in the whole effing world are gonna be in Alamo County. And then the governor said something extremely important, Judah. There's gonna be a pharmaceutical and biotechnology Beltway from Rockingham To Goochlin, and it's going to be The foundation of that pharmaceutical and biotechnology Beltway is gonna be Alamo County in Charlottesville, Virginia. And that foundation is going to be the Paul Manning Biotech Institute, Fontaine, a hundred-plus billion dollar donation from the Manning family. It's gonna be AstraZeneca, and it's gonna be Eli Lilly that's doing five billion in Goochlin with 650 scientists coming to that facility.
Right.
In the last month, we've seen Eli Lilly announce a five billion dollar facility in Goochlin and 650 jobs. And AstraZeneca, 4.5 billion in Alamo County and 600 jobs. There's just those two facilities, One thousand two hundred and fifty six-figure jobs.
Yeah.
One thousand two hundred and fifty. And ladies and gentlemen, on this show, on this network, For the last thirty-six months, I've been saying that biotechnology and data science will uptick this population By seven or eight thousand people in the next ten years. And that prediction has proven to be correct. The true impact of the biotechnology, Paul Manning, and the true impact of AstraZeneca, and the true impact of Eli Lilly, And the true impact of data science is the jobs directly they create, but it's indirect jobs that are coming, that are birthed from this. And then I want to leave this topic by asking you, the viewer and listener, this question. Where are thousands of new people with Scrooge McDuck bags of gold coins going to live In a throttled real estate market that's lacking inventory and options? Well, these Scrooge McDuck bags Of gold coins are gonna target Alamo County, Ivy And Western Alamo first. They're gonna drive the value of real estate in Alamo County, Ivy and Western Alamo even higher than it is now. So if you own a home in these areas, you're in the caper seat. They're gonna target the Keswick area, especially the Goochlin folks, because of proximity, Driving value. That in turn will cascade or create a domino effect. It's going to take the middle class, the upper middle class, the middle class, the lower middle class, and Gentrify them out, or 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 gentrify them out, or or jettison them out Of Alamo because of affordability issues, and it's gonna push them into surrounding counties even more. At one time, the folks that were being pushed into like the surrounding counties like Fluvana, Orange, Louisa, or over the mountain in Waynesboro, at one time, it was frontline workers in the service industry, Like teachers and nurses and firefighters and E M Ts and police and food and beverage workers. Now, the people that are gonna be pushed out of Alamo County, ladies and gentlemen, are going to be the straight up middle class and upper middle class.
Yeah.
Do you hear what I'm saying, viewers and listeners? This is as significant a story as any, but it's been shadowed by a school board member choosing to compare teenagers to the Ku Klux Klan. And the final story we should highlight is, was it 303 Alderman Road, Judah?
Yeah.
And before I show you 303 Alderman Road, ladies and gentlemen, This is Evergreen, the development company that that purchased in June of last year, a a brick rancher, Only to 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 have a motivation of tearing it down, A nineteen fifty year, a a brick rancher built in nineteen fifty. Before I show you what the photos are and and highlight the current asking price, I want to highlight Charlottesville Sanitary Supply and John Vermillion and Andrew Vermillion. Their family business is three generations of Vermillions. It's located on High Street, and it's online at charlottesvillesanitariesupply.com. The Vermillion family is five generations strong in Alamo County. If you have any sanitary supply needs, you can order it through their website, charlottesvillesanitariesupply.com, and it will be on your doorstep the same day. Free delivery, faster delivery than the big box stores and their websites. And you're supporting a locally owned and operated institution that's sixty-one years old. I love the Vermillions.
No doubt.
Honest men, communicative team, anything you need, Mila vacuums, Pool robots, a mechanic on site to fix your sanitary equipment, your expensive vacuums and your pool robots, Water testing for your swimming pool, these guys are the best. Let's put the photos on screen for 303 Alderman Road. This home was built in nineteen fifty. Three bedrooms, two baths, one thousand nine hundred and sixteen square feet. Evergreen, the builder and development company, purchased this in June of 2024 for eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Then they immediately put a banner on the front of the rancher that said, "This is the future of six Luxury brownstones."
Yeah.
That calls the, that calls the premier, the the pomp, the prestigious, the Tony, The institutional Lewis Mount neighborhood to revolt and said, "What do you mean you're gonna build six luxury brownstones On a point three one acre lot?" And then that's when we all learned what I've been talking about for years, the word upzoning. Upzoning. It's like a four-letter word, upzoning. You're gonna upzone this? Upzone this? And then Lewis Mountain got so outraged and so Driven by outcry That they fought this and literally got Evergreen to go from developing the Site into six luxury brownstones to saying, "I want nothing to do with this neighborhood and these people. I'm gonna sell this house." Look at what they're trying to sell now. The the, show the photos. The asking price is nine hundred and forty-nine thousand. So Evergreen buys this for eight hundred and Thirty-five thousand in June of last year, eight thirty-five. Now it's listed at nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars more, And Evergreen ripped out everything of the inside. There is nothing in the inside of the house. Because remember, they were gonna knock this down, so they gutted the interior of the home. Are you showing the inside of the home?
They're seeing it now.
Look at the screen. There literally is nothing in the house.
Yeah.
They took everything out, and now they're trying to sell it for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars more than what they bought it for this past, in June of last year.
It's nuts.
Make this make sense. Make this make sense, anybody?
They're dreaming in one hand and you know what in the other.
Dude, I'm just gonna offer free advice to Evergreen, and Evergreen watches and listens to this show. Here's some free advice. Stop throwing good money after bad money. Cut your losses. Get the hell out of this holding in this position as soon as possible. You are nuts if you think you can sell this for it. Have you not listened to the I Love Seville Show and realized that in 2025, Charlottesville City Home Values are going downward? They're not going upward, and they're going downward because of the incompetent leadership in the city. They literally are down five percent year over year, city home values, and on top of that, you gutted the house. You, this is the stupidest thing I've ever seen in my whole life. Yeah, when they bought it last year to when they're, wait, to right now, City values are down five percent, and then they gutted the whole house, and they're asking a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars more than what they purchased for it last year.
Yeah.
What are you doing? I'm I'm floored and flabbergasted. I sincerely am floored and flabbergasted by this.
No doubt.
Cut your losses. Stop throwing good money after bad money. Learn the hard way. Do not do the same mistake Spillman did, where she doubled down on her first bad statement with a terrible second statement, it's bad judgment. Cut your losses. Get out of the position. No one's gonna spend this much money for this. That's the show. That is one hour and ten minutes, seventy minutes straight of talking without commercial break. There's nowhere else that's giving you this. Nowhere. And if you need office space of any capacity, reach out to us. We have more office space at our disposal than anybody, all the way from four hundred a month to ten thousand a month. DM me, email me, call me, Talk to me. We'll hook you up. Matchmaker of office space, like Patty from Million Dollar Matchmaker, but office space. Judah Wickauer, it's his second favorite day of the pay period, Friday. His only better, more favorite day is payday. That's next Friday. My name is Jerry Miller. This is the I Love Seville Show. Enjoy your weekend.